Okay. Well. Um, I guess we could start. Any words, Laura?
Not yet.
All right. Well, why don't we kick it off? Um. All right. Yep, welcome to our special board meeting on March 16th, 2021. And Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Get up hard.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Myers, are you present?
I'm here.
Sergeant. Sweetie Moran.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so our first item up is our, our, excuse me, our action items. And I am having a hard time finding this today for some reason. Which is the first action?
That would be 3.01 District Unified Improvement Plan.
There you go. Um, can we have a motion to approve the district, the unified improvement plan?
I move.
And do we have a second?
Looks likely.
Lisa.
Okay, I see you. All right. Any questions about the district unified improvement plan? I am not killing it with Google meets. Let's see here.
I don't have that in front of me. I am going to look for it on last. At the last board meeting. I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay, so we're adopting it. That doesn't mean that we can't speak about it throughout the year or the strategic plan. It would probably make sense because we try not to do things just in 12 month increments. So we would approve it as is and accepting the feedback that DAC gave or the plan that Jonathan developed with some of the feedback that was incorporated. Um, given by DAC. Any other questions? Okay. Uh, Laura, do you want to call the roll on that motion?
Um, Garcia.
Yes.
Get up hard.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yeah.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant. You're muted.
I have trouble with Google meets. Yes.
Sweetie Moran.
Yes.
This.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is a 3.02 Resolution 2112 Supporting Secure Storage Legislation. So this is something we got a head nod at the last meeting. To support this piece of legislation that's going through right now that was already passed in the House. Um, do we have a motion to approve before we start discussion? By Richard and seconded by Stacy. Um, any questions?
No, just a quick comment. It's for me, it's pretty common sense legislation, right?
Great. Anything else? All right, Laura, do you want to call the roll to support this legislation?
Sure. Garcia.
Yes.
Get up hard.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Sweetie Moran.
Yes.
This.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Um, and then I did these in reverse order. So our next item is actually to do the strategic plan piece. So is that okay, Laura?
That should be fine.
All right. That was quick business. All right, so our next item is strategic plan implementation. Everyone had some things to read. Rob, do you want to take over?
I do. Thank you, Board President, Marquess, board members. We're really excited about this afternoon slash evening's work session on some of our strategic plan work. Appreciate board members doing some pre-reading and some pre-work for us as we, as we start to dive in. You know, as we think about the ways that we engage the board, you know, many times and oftentimes we're giving very high level overviews. Um, and, uh, and today's going to be a little bit of a deeper dive. We'll sneak you a little bit in the weeds. Dr. Messier is going to be leading our presentation today. She's, um, worked in, in some ways to make this engaging and, and interactive. So my hope that at the end of this session, uh, that we will be able to meet, uh, some of the goals, uh, that we've set for you all to take away from what it is we're presenting today. So, uh, we've got incredible members of our team here to, to help out with today's presentation. Some of these folks you may not have met before, but they're, um, so I'm excited for you to get a chance to interact with them. And without further ado, I will turn the agenda and presentation over to Dr. Messier.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. President Marquess, members of the board, we are really delighted to have this opportunity to, to spend some quality time with you this evening and really going deep into the strategic plan. Uh, the folks who are assembled here this evening to help us present, um, have done just a tremendous amount of work. And I think done some really high quality work to, to create systems and structures that are going to help our district be successful and help our district. Narrow the achievement gap over the next several years. So board members, um, just a couple of housekeeping items. Um, I have dropped in the chat the link to the slide deck and I would advise you to open that up. Uh, there, there are some links that are embedded in it. So if you want to open that up and follow along, uh, as we go, that, that may be very helpful. Please make sure that you're logged in to your bvstd.org account. Um, otherwise you won't have access to that. We have several people on deck to help you with technology tonight. So board members, if any of you have an issue with any of the technology, please reach out through the chat and just say that you're having some trouble. And someone will reach out to you, um, to, to try to help you work through whatever, uh, technology glitch is happening for you. We do have some interactive things planned and a couple of those do involve technology. So you're going to get a little flavor of online learning tonight, too. Um, and that doesn't always go perfectly smoothly. Um, and so bear with us as we work through it and, um, just let us know in the chat if anybody needs, um, some help with that.
Wait, did everyone find the chat?
Yeah. I'm, I'm getting there. I've got.
Upper right hand corner.
Why, I see it. I've just got two computers going right now, so sorry, um, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Great. So I'm going to go ahead and bring up our slide deck. All right. Um, so we're going to go ahead and launch into this and board members, I just want to call your attention to the fact that, uh, as we engage in this session this evening, we're going to be following our BVSD instructional model. So this is one of the things that we're really excited about with our, um, strategic plan and the way that it's rolling out. Is that we finally have this common BVSD instructional model that reaches across all grade levels and across all contents. And we're committed to using it not just in our instruction with students, but also in our professional learning with staff. So tonight we'll be following this cycle of beginning with some activities to engage your interest. Then being really clear about setting goals for the session. Then we'll spend a pretty good chunk of time, uh, in guide new learning. We'll, where we'll be sharing some new information with you. And periodically throughout that, we'll do some reinforce and reflect where we'll stop and, um, reflect on what we've talked about and reinforce that learning. And at the very end, we have a section on demonstrating learning that I hope you guys will find, uh, fun and enjoyable. So at this point, I am going to hand it off to Dr. Margaret Crespo to lead us through the engage activity.
Good evening, board members. Margaret Crespo here. Thanks, everybody who's on the call. So if you remember, you had a short homework assignment, which was to read a case study, and we hope that you had the opportunity to do that. What we're going to do for a moment, does everybody have access to their case study? Which is the Gallup McKinley County Schools Case Study? Okay, I see lots of nods, so hopefully you have access to that. And we're just going to take a few minutes. Um, I'm going to start by giving you just a few minutes to kind of refresh your memory a little bit. Look through that document, the highlights, and then we'll be ready to ask you some questions. So I'll just give it a quick timer. All right. So as you did that, hopefully you remembered your reading and we're here tonight to ask two questions. So the first one is where the Gallup McKinley District Act were, sorry, were the Gallup McKinley District Actions successful? Why or why not? I want to share, I read that question 100 times before the board meeting. So, um, how, what do you, what do you think of the, um, action steps that the district took and were they successful or not? And we'll just take a moment, think on that, and then you can share your answers out.
How do you want us to share the answers, Margaret? Are we going to go alphabetically? Are we going to go hand raised? Should I raise my hand? I'm just curious what the process is.
You can raise your hand. I saw Stacy's hand up first.
Do you want me to go now, then?
Yes, please.
Okay. So one thing that struck me was how the case study really talked about systemic changes and not just changes at individual schools or one offs. And I thought, uh, that that was, um, something that let them be successful and it also mirrored what I think we're doing in BVSD.
Kathy, I think you had your hand up next.
I was a little troubled by how they measured success. It didn't look like they went much beyond test scores.
Okay. Others? Lisa?
I think yes, maybe no. Yes, they increased test scores. Maybe those changes were related to a substantial increase in learning and systemic change. And no, they failed to communicate clearly with the board and with the community.
Okay. Anyone else on that first question? Around actions of success, why or why not?
I don't know if it's, uh, why or why not, but I thought it was interesting that it was always clear that districts and schools learned broad lessons from the, the previous work that they had done. And, and that really, I didn't, I didn't feel that there was a, uh. I, I thought we're following something similar, but I didn't feel that, uh, that here's the answer. It didn't stick out at me.
Okay. So that, um, is really helpful for our next question. I think that's a great beginning. Kitty, did you have something that you wanted to share? Yep.
Yes. All right. I tried to click raised hand and I don't see if it raised. Anyway, no, one of the problems I noticed was that when they got new board members, they didn't really bring them up to speed. So, you know, and that probably goes along with the not getting the community involved and, you know, not doing the pre-planning work that would have made it easier.
I don't like. Yes. Others? Kitty, there's your hand raised now. That worked. Uh, if there are others that want to share, please feel free to do that as we start transitioning to the next question. Anyone else? Okay. So the reason it's important to determine how we feel as we're headed into this conversation moving forward this evening is to really ground ourselves and balance what we think about the, what we're reading and where we're headed as a district and what that looks like, uh, moving forward. So that as questions come up, we're able to really think back to what we believe as board members or what we think of in district perspectives. So the second question is, if you had been on the Gallup McKinley School Board, what, if anything, might have you done differently? Now, some of you had shared some information when we started, so coming back around to that, just wondering who wants to, uh, start? Yeah. It's like, yeah, no.
Um, I think the part about telling the story clearly to the community so that if you are encountering probable resistance, for instance, moving personnel, that, um, the community understands why. And it's in a way that's collaborative with all the people who are involved in those types of decisions.
Great, thank you. Others? Lisa?
I agree with that. And I think Kathy and I had both mentioned questions about the testing. So I suppose I would have been interested on the school board in understanding all the different ways we're assessing students and in getting information on whether we could predict long-term successes based on the short-term gains.
Great. Kitty?
I'm trying to remember what I was going to say. I was listening to Lisa and I forgot. I'll raise my hand again when I remember it.
Okay, sounds good. Tina, is that an old hand or a new hand?
I remember now.
Okay, go ahead, Kitty.
At the beginning, they talked about, um, the board and the superintendent kind of chafing against each other, but they didn't really go into it in a lot of detail. But that would be something you'd want to, you know, I would want to explore more is what was that about? Because he obviously had the right idea to start this partnership with UVA. But, you know, obviously there were problems going on.
Tina, did you have something to share as well?
No.
Nope. Okay. Others? Yes, Richard.
One thing I didn't get from that. Was the district forced to do this? Or did they do it on their own? I know that they were the lowest performing. In the state of New Mexico, New Mexico is the lowest performing state in the whole state of the United States. And I do agree with the comment that, uh, both Kathy and Lisa made around assessment scores, if that's the only metric they were using. And also the, uh, community engagement. I don't think there was any authentic community engagement at all. In that process. And I believe that's probably where they got into trouble, especially with the principal removals. I think I would have, if I was, if I was there and I was, if I was on the Board of Education, I think I would have done something a bit different in terms of making sure that. The district would follow a similar process that was used here when they were developing the strategic plan.
Great, thank you. Donna and then Kathy?
Yeah, I don't have anything extra at this point to add. I, I think later on I'll, um, when you bring in some of the other things that we read, I have some thoughts, but, but no, I agree with the assessment piece. And, uh, and I'm having a little bit of problems with my screen. All that's coming up on my screen is a big picture of Ari. I can't, I can't seem to, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm working on it from my end and hopefully I, it could be my internet. Thanks.
Uh, Kathy and then Lisa. And Donna, if you, there's a pin on the picture, if you just click that pin, it might work for you. It's like a thumb tack. So, um, Kathy and then Lisa, please.
I'm working on it. Thanks. Yeah.
It was unclear to me what policies may or may not have been in the way of them being able to do any of their work. So it wasn't clear to me if they had some policy conversations, kind of like what we've done with our discipline policies that would have allowed them to be there, not do what they wanted to do or to proceed. It would have been helpful to know that kind of level of governance from the board because I wasn't really clear what the board's role was, other than their initial confrontation with their superintendent. So I didn't have a clear sense of the board role, I have to say.
All right, great. And Lisa, and then I think we'll move on to the next slide. Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, yeah, I thought this was interesting. I spoke to somebody who had been working in the district at the time and the conversation we had was around the fact that this was, um, effective in raising test scores. But there were questions about whether it had been tailored to the fact that it was a largely indigenous population and how much work the district had done to sort of reflect on that and bring that in and consider cultural elements. So I think questions like that would be interesting as well.
Great. And all of these questions and this feedback as we move forward really helps us develop, um, what are the needs, talk communicating to the board and our community and answering the questions about, um, making sure that we're avoiding anything as we move forward. The second piece to, um, the slides for me tonight, the problems that we're facing in BVSD are similar in many ways to the ones that we're faced in Gallup, in the Gallup McKinley District. So the reality for us is that we've discussed over time historic achievement gaps. That gap has continued to grow through the, through the pandemic and we've shared that information with you as we've moved forward. We, the magnification of our opportunity gap, so students' opportunities are not equitable throughout the system. And then lastly, both districts have, had dealt with and have dealt with systematic disproportionality. And we certainly have discussed that students of color in our district as well as Gallup McKinley were disciplined unequally throughout, um, the districts. So part of that drives our conversation moving forward. And the feedback that you've given us tonight through this learning process is helpful as we move forward. So learning for both sides. And with that, I'll hand it over, uh, back to Sam. Actually, I'm handing it over to Michelle DeBarry. I apologize.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight. As Dr. Anderson and, uh, Dr. Messier both mentioned, we have some objectives that we're going to, uh, try to reach this evening in our various activities. There's five of them. The first one is that members of the board will be able to describe the stakeholder engagement we've had along the way as we've developed the strategic plan. The second one is you'll be able to identify the key research studies that were considered as we developed the strategic plan and the supports therein. The third one, um, board members will be able to explain the district UIP and the targeted UVA work that has taken place in key schools. The fourth one, you'll be able to explain the purpose of the systems and structures that will be implemented this coming fall. And the final one is that board members will be able to describe the improved conditions for teachers and the enhanced experiences that we anticipate students and parents will, um, experience starting in the fall. And with that, we'll start on the stakeholder engagement that's gone along the way as we've developed the strategic plan. Sam, you can go ahead and start the video.
This may look like a pretty typical night in any Boulder Valley school. Parents and staff gather to talk about something important. Tonight's discussion, however, is a little bit more important than most. The feedback gathered from this and a handful of other sessions across the district will help to guide the direction of the Boulder Valley School District for years to come.
I'm excited to hear your thoughts about our strategic plan and the priorities that we want for our students in Boulder Valley.
This is an exciting process for us as a district and as a community. As we start thinking about, um, the things that we're already good at, the things that we want to get better at, and how do we develop a strategy that makes sure that we're really driving resources?
Our time, our efforts, our talents and our energy towards those things that will, will lead us to become the best school district in the country, which would be my hope for BVSD.
These feedback forums were open and accessible to everyone in the community. Giving everyone a chance to review the data in a variety of areas, including achievement gaps that are prompting the district to take action.
It's not a big picture, but the fact that the superintendent is taking the time to acknowledge that this is a problem. And the fact that he's taking our opinion into consideration for bettering this, the set problem is a huge step, something that in the 10 years we've been in the district and I'm counting preschool, um, we have not seen. And this is huge for us.
Armed with this knowledge, participants had the opportunity to provide feedback on long-term outcomes for students and strategic themes that will become the foundation for our new strategic plan.
This is our chance to let our voice be heard. And if you're not doing it at this level, then you're missing an opportunity.
It's big picture, but really it gets down to the details.
All voices were welcome.
Elliot, do you have anything to share?
Even the youngest ones.
People, if they have special needs or something, that they can do what they need to do.
Broomfield height sixth grader Sid and his little brother who goes to Cole Elementary were there to share their perspective on what would make BVSD schools better.
It'll feel more fun. I like fun.
I think they need to see that you can have a voice.
While a few of their ideas were a bit wild.
There would be trampolines on the ground.
Yeah, not too bad, right?
They had great feedback from their own experience.
In fifth grade, I had an open seating system and I liked it because like you could sit next to your friends.
Having kids in the system might want to just ensure that my voice is being heard and their voice is being heard, um, because it's going to impact them. We're doing this for them. I mean, they are our future, right?
So, good evening, everyone, and very nice to be here with you. And so now on this slide, we are going to have the opportunity to use a digital engagement strategy using what's called Padlet. That students and adults in BVSD generally really enjoy using. So to engage about engagement, really, this activity will serve to give us both feedback on this process, but also to help re-ground us in the entire scope of engagement. That has occurred around the development of the strategic plan since all the way back in 2017. So if you would go ahead and open the Padlet at this time. You can go ahead.
Is that on the chat?
Yeah. How do we open that?
There's a link in the chat that Sam just placed in there.
I'll give everybody a moment to locate that on the chat. Okay, so, once you have opened the Padlet, go ahead and take a couple of minutes to look at the timeline of events. And these are all the events that have occurred, as I said before, since 2017 in terms of community engagement on this topic. Then go ahead and rate them according to both effectiveness in your opinion and authenticity in engagement. And you'll also see under each item, each event, that you can also make comments if you would like. So I'll give everybody a couple of minutes to be able to do that. And if you have any questions, please let us know. So I'll give everybody a couple of minutes to be able to do that. And if you have any questions, please let us know. So if you don't mind showing me with your fingers how many more minutes you need to complete the Padlet. One, two, three, or if you're ready, feel free, thank you, Lisa, to give me a zero, zero minutes, okay? I see a couple zeros, I see a four. All right, zero, maybe we will take the the difference between zeros and go a couple of more minutes.
I did something and it put all of the things in one line and they're going, I can't see all of them and I don't know what to do to undo that. I was trying to make it the text bigger. So I don't know if I'm going to be able to do all of them.
Okay, so you're, you're right. It's difficult to make the text bigger. So one of our tech people will reach out to you and, and help you with that. So there is a, an icon, as Tiffany just put in the, in the chat, the white circle. And if you click on that, that will help you. And then as you look at each event, you can scroll to the right to see the subsequent events. The other thing we will do is make these tools available to you so that you don't need to stress about completing your feedback at this point. If you would like to come back to it later, you can do that and we will make that opportunity available to you. So knowing that, that this is not the end of the opportunity to, to look at the engagement and provide feedback, we will move on to the next slide, if you would, Sam. So we began this evening talking about big systemic change in our case study. And we continued by looking at where we have been in terms of engagement to get to the point where we are currently. And so now we're going to transition from preparation for the work to thinking about how all the UVA work to date has served to inform our district UIP and strategic plan and vice versa. So as we've been talking about since we launched the UVA work at Columbine and Alicia Sanchez and now Cole, this work definitely does not occur in a bubble or outside of the scope of one community, one network, or one area of our district. So our goal with talking about this work and the interconnectedness of the district UIP, the strategic plan, and the UVA work is to ensure that we're all on the same page about in what ways and the degree to which all this work is interwoven. So next slide, please, Sam. Okay, so we're going to spend just a little bit more time on this slide because this really is one of the key concepts around how all the work that we're discussing tonight is aligned and truly interdependent. We've talked a lot over the course of the last couple of years that in order to achieve improved outcomes for students at any school, in any community, in our district, and ultimately achieving the long-term outcomes as we have identified in the strategic plan, none of this, as I said just a moment ago, is effective in isolation at any one level, at the district level, at the school level, at the, or at the classroom level. It all works as, as a whole. And so this, this graphic depiction is of how you will see that the big picture work, if you will. So in other words, that of the district-wide strategic plan and the district-wide UIP are formed based on what the system-wide data tells us are the needs of the district as a whole. And it's a composite of the data and the needs really of each individual entity within our communities. So if you start looking at the left side of, of this graphic and the move to the right, you can see that the work at the school level is designed to address the data and the needs specific to each community. And so really what this is, is the unique interpretation and the tailoring of the district information to each individual setting. So the ultimate goal is to provide these schools with the support and focus necessary to take their specific data and create goals and action steps that will then improve outcomes in their very specific and different contexts. As we continue to move to the right on this graphic, we have the new measures of student learning. Or in other words, what we do is we build specific data or we look at building specific data on student growth and achievement. And we couple that with the data-driven instruction structures that thanks to the work that we have been engaging in with UVA, we're learning to use at our UVA partner schools, but also across the district that really help us understand on a much deeper and a more effective level exactly what the needs are in each of our classrooms, in each of our schools, in each of our communities. So that each teacher is able to plan for differentiated instructions for their, instruction for their students.
And just, Robin, just if I, if I can just make a point as we think about how Alicia Sanchez and others have used this. It's not always test score data. To Kathy's point earlier, to Lisa's point, you can look at behavioral data, you can look at opportunity data, that, you know, the things that we, that we hold important as a school district, which as a board members, as we've talked about, these achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, and disproportionality, that these processes can, can all be used as, as we think about driving change and improvement.
Yes, thank you for that, Dr. Anderson. And we will be looking at that in a moment when we look really at the, the video of Principal DeRivera at Alicia Sanchez Elementary School, who talks about in practical terms what that means. Because you are absolutely right. Data is not just state test scores. Data is not just individual classroom teacher-created test scores. Data is based not only in that aspect of achievement and, and growth, but you are right, it is also about behavioral data, about students' ability to access learning in classrooms every day. It's about students' ability to access content. It's about students' ability to interact with their classmates and their teachers in a way that is, is conducive to their own learning and for teachers to understand how each of their individual students learn, so they are able to adjust instruction for all students, but also to align with the needs of each individual student. So that's absolutely right, and thank you for that. And so data really is, you know, oftentimes we reduce the concept of the meaning of the word data to be impersonal and, and numbers in nature. But it's important also to understand that, that data is any source of information that we use to understand our students, our schools, and our communities better. The information beyond what we think and what we feel, but beyond what is actually measurable in terms of, of the needs of our students. And so how we use that data, that information to create and inform systems and structures is what serves as the backbone for our staff members at each school to then bring that coupled with their knowledge and expertise into the equation. And with both of those pieces together, what some people call the art and the science of teaching is what then comes together to create a guaranteed and viable educational experience for every student in every school across the district. We've talked a lot since we've been engaging with, with UVA about how is it that we make sure that every child is not just lucky to fall into a certain classroom with a certain teacher, but that every child, based on the systems and structures that we have learned to implement, is guaranteed to have a high-quality, a high-quality experience. And so finally, the work that's been pioneered at our UVA schools at Alicia Sanchez, Columbine, and Cole has helped us know then, moving back to the left on this graphic, at the district level, has helped inform us about how to proceed with the creation of both the strategic plan and the implementation of this plan of all of the strategic initiatives so that we have a much better understanding of what has worked well and not so well, honestly, in actual BVSD schools with actual BVSD students and staff. So with that, Sam, if you would proceed to the next slide. Okay, this is a slide that you very recently saw when Jonathan Dings was before you presenting about the district UIP. He talked about the system-wide priority performance challenges, the root causes that have been determined to be the cause of the challenges, and the major improvement strategies that have been identified to address these challenges. So the way the district UIP work then translates to each school's UIP is that again, we know that each school community has some varying degree and unique aspects of each of these challenges and therefore, the strategies to address these challenges are also then varied and individualized to each school and thus reflected in each school's UIP. Next slide, please, Sam.
Quick question, Robin. As, as board members, as we're walking through this, if board members have questions or comments or thoughts, you know, if we can make sure that we're pausing and just asking if there's any clarifications or anything. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're giving, giving each of the slides enough time to, to generate the understanding.
Yeah, if you could go back to the slide before this one, Robin. And here you were talking about each, each school has to look at these priority performance challenges, every school in the district?
So these are the, this is the information from the district UIP.
Right.
So then based on the composite information that we see in the district UIP, then we look at how that translates in what way to the needs of each school. And then based on what the school-specific data tells us, it tells us to what degree and in what way the needs of the school are aligned in terms of do they have the same priority performance challenges as the district as a whole or not? Are the root causes the same as a whole or not? And then are the major improvement strategies that we focus on in each school?
Okay, great.
Aligned to in what way?
Good, 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 because I was, I was not clear in terms of how the schools were going to use this, but now I know that every school's going to be different.
Exactly.
And every school's going to have different root causes. Yeah, okay.
Exactly. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so Sam, if you would move forward. Okay, so this is also a slide that we've seen on multiple occasions. And I'm sharing it again this evening because it really represents some major foundational learning that we've had as a result of the UVA work. So often districts around the country blame individual schools for unacceptable student performance. And in turn, schools blame students for their lack of achievement and growth. So the grout, if you will, that glues all the pieces that we're speaking about tonight together is the understanding that improving outcomes for students starts at the district level in the way in which we at the district office either create the conditions, provide support, and clear the pathway for schools to engage successfully in the work of school improvement or not. Because we know that without creating this pathway in the district conditions, school can't do it. Schools can't do it on their own. In addition, teachers can't do it on their own without the school conditions being conducive to that. So with each of these pieces in alignment, it comes down to creating the classroom environment, which really is where the rubber meets the road in order to change outcomes for students. So if you would move forward.
I would, I would think it would be reversed.
Would you like to say more about that, Richard?
If you're saying that it's the district conditions that, that, how did, how did you word that? Say it again. District conditions are the ones that determine.
Sam, if you can move the slide back for, for Richard, and I know that Kathy had her hand raised as well.
Yes, so it's our responsibility at the Ed Center to create the proper conditions for schools to be able to do this work. And for schools to create the conditions for the, for the work to happen in the classrooms. So it is our responsibility to provide, to provide the right types and amounts of resources to schools. It is our responsibility at, at the district office to remove unnecessary barriers to achieving this work. It is, et cetera. So, yeah, thank you.
You know, when you talk about, when you talk about conditions, I would think that it's the school's condition that the district has to pay attention to, to be able to provide them the resources that they need.
Exactly.
I don't know if we're saying the same thing, but it seems to me like it's.
So, so yes.
The one that gets in my way.
You know, the, the, the way that I think about this is really simply that there are, if you have the right conditions, supports, resources, expectations in a school, it makes teachers better, right? If you have the right conditions at the district where you give people what they need, clear expectations, the right supports, it makes school better. Each, you know, it makes the, the results at schools better. So I, there's just this, the relationship, but to your point, Richard, the community conditions are really what need to drive the district conditions, if that makes sense. You're muted.
Okay. When I hear the, the term school conditions, I'm looking at, okay, what are the environments that prevent these kids from becoming successful in their school? You know, it, they could be in a, in a low-poverty environment, they could be in a high-poverty environment. For example, if you take, if you take what's happening at Bear Creek versus what happens at Sanchez. You have different kids, you have different environments, you have different resources, you have all of that. So those conditions are the ones that are determining what resources that particular school needs so that you can support them better. Am I, am I, am I saying that correctly or not?
We, we, I think we're on the same page. When we're talking about conditions, we're really thinking about, you know, the conditions that the school district sets, right? Like, so, you know, we, we get to determine, you know, what's in our strategic plan. What are the things that we provide guidance and support for? How do we allocate resources? So when we think about conditions, those are the things within our control, right? To the extent that you're talking about some of the conditions that, that are community-wide conditions or school-specific conditions, I think those are things that help drive how we support schools, right? So similar, and I, and I do think related and both certainly important.
Okay.
So Kathy, you had your hand up.
So my question, I think, is a little similar to Richard. So three UVA schools are all elementary schools and I'm having a hard time translating those lessons, except at like a 50,000-foot level, to what's going on at Fairview or Monarch or one of those schools. So maybe you could talk a little about that because you said you take those lessons. And like I said, at 50,000 feet, yeah, I can see that, but I have a hard time figuring out how a first-grade teacher's lessons are relatable to an IB calculus teacher.
Kathy, and we're, we're, if, if you would, if, if you can be patient with us until we get to the part where we go into the specific systems, I think that we'll talk about how those look different at elementary versus at secondary. So some of the folks from our team are going to speak to the specifics of how scope and sequence, for example, looks different at secondary and how we're even building that in a really different way at secondary than we, than we are at elementary.
Well, I'm fine waiting, Sam. It was just the comment that you're taking those lessons and then applying them to all the schools is where my brain stopped.
Sure.
Sure. And that's a great question. We're happy to talk about that. Donna, yeah?
And, and I might add that from my reading, you know, as you were talking about this, that my brain clicked in and so I had to go back because I thought I read something about that. And, and maybe Sam will say, we'll get to that in just a bit. But, but this, I underline this statement, we have little evidence to suggest that more centrally managed school districts produce fewer lower, lower-performing schools than decentralized systems. So it sounds like, I, I was trained to figure out or process what you're saying about, explain to me what the centralized part is versus the decentralized part in, in our own planning.
So that's a great question. So. let, let me rephrase that as the district environment. So what we know is that very often across the country, when there are schools that are in need of school improvement, where we need to increase the, the achievement and growth of students, very often what happens is people who work at central office say, go and do it, and then they throw up their hands and they stand back. The district conditions means that we are tailoring the type of support and the type of resources and the type of programming that each of those schools needs to address the unique needs of the schools and communities. And so that really ties together your question with Richard's question. We have to know that it is our responsibility at the district office to give each school the tailored type of support that it needs and not just throw up our hands and stand back and say, okay, go forth and, and improve and improve student outcomes. They need our support and they need us to remove barriers and provide them the right types of supports and resources.
And are you doing that through each school's administration, like principal and the vice-principal? That's how it filters down?
Well, it's actually a collaborative process through the S3M. So the school, the strategic school support process that we engage in with our network staff, but also the principal, the assistant principal, and in many, if not most cases, the, the teacher leaders. And so in some cases, they're department leaders, and in other cases, it's the leadership team who really look at what are these whole systems? And through that process, we learn from them at the networks and at, at the district office, what are those needs? And we work with them on identifying the root causes of their challenges. And then we work together and collaboratively on, okay, and so what supports do you as a school need in order to successfully address those challenges? And so that's what our network staff does, and that's what we do when we deploy the network staff so that they are in there knowing the schools and knowing what those supports are and supporting the teachers and the principals in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say that is why you reorganized.
Exactly. And we have really seen tremendous progress through that reorganization because our network staffs have been able to really get to know each of their network where they, where they work and very, very closely the needs of each school. And they spend a lot of time in the schools, in their networks. And so that ability to focus has, you are absolutely right, been quite successful in furthering this work. Does anybody else have another question? Okay, so, um, I think to bring it to a practical level, Sam, if you wouldn't mind, uh, starting to play the, the video from Principal Joel Rivera, who talks about it really, what that looks like at the actual school level.
Not on this impact, you know, they're more engaged in school because we're targeting the gaps that they have. So it's not like, you know, students learning something that they already know or over the head.
About what they don't know. It's like really targeting where the students are performing. It's, it's, um, you know, so it's not like blanket instruction. It's really specific on, based off of data. So, um, that's been a great impact. The next impact, if you look at some of our, um, some of the data that we pulled, we had a benchmark test two tests ago with, uh, some short constructive responses. We only had in, let's say, fourth grade, looking at fourth grade, we had 27 out of 39 kids in fourth grade not respond at all to the SCRs, uh, or sorry, 27 out of 39 kids did respond. And at the last test, we had 36 out of 39 kids that responded to those SCRs. And then not only that, we did a side-by-side comparison of what they did on the first SCR and what they did on the second one. And it, you would think they're two separate kids writing those out because we actually, again, focusing in on the standards, focusing on what the students need to be able to do on that gap. And then when you do the reteach and look at it, it's like, wow, look at this, they, they are that much more engaged in what they're learning. And, and that's just going to keep building, you know, that, so that happened now, and the next time it's going to be even more, and the next time it's going to be even more. And we're able to focus in on what they're able to do and improve it from there. So that's been a huge impact. And then, um, you know, like I said, when you individualize instruction at a level based off of data and where they're performing, they're automatically going to be more engaged. More engagement leads to more understanding, more understanding leads to, you know, uh, you know, better outcomes for kids and that content and curriculum, and then from there moving forward. So it's been a huge just shift in, in what we're doing. For us, we see it on the, we'll see it on the unit planning sheet, we'll see it on the year at a glance. We'll see when these assessments fall, we can start creating them and play, better plan our lessons with what's going on in there. It's going to be just, uh, uh, again, um, the strategic plan is going to support our work versus add extra. And that's what we met with our staff this morning and talked about because we, we have had a lot of these structures and foundational pieces in place. So like, we're actually looking forward to it and, and our, our staff, you know, the questions they had this, this, this morning about this, it wasn't like, how are we going to implement this? Where's the time going to come from? It was all like, okay, so we're going to use this curriculum. And did they look at the math expressions, scope and sequence to help, uh, to help guide the work for our district scope and sequence? So it was like questions about, um, you know, how this work is going to improve and make sure that we're not losing some of these other pieces. Uh, it, it was incredible, like I'm, we're really excited about this work moving forward. And we had great teacher leader Jenny Laramie that led it, um, with me. So like I said, it's, it's, it's going to enhance our work and it's going to make it easier. Um, and then we'll be able to fall back on the district for support because we had to answer a lot of those questions on our own. Well, you know, when does this fall? When, how, how do we give this skill? You know, when do we teach this standard? It's going to all be there and then we can plan our whole year out in terms of our benchmark assessments, which is.
Thank you, Sam. So if you don't mind forwarding to the next slide. So the goal of that video really was to understand at a school level, the intentional use of information about how students are both engaging with and how they're able to understand and master content. And so using that information, it takes the guesswork out and it talked about, Principal Rivera talked about what they're doing as a school to help teachers understand, uh, students' understanding of content and also their, uh, engagement and their ability to learn. But he also refers to the district conditions and the types of supports that they would be looking for in being able to further that work. So in a nutshell, this is the integral of the nature of all of these things. So if you would take just a moment, um, to think about what is one or more connections that you thought about, uh, between the district UIP, the strategic plan and the UVA work? And if you would in the chat, this is a tool that we use often, just share out a phrase. Share out a phrase of one connection that you made in as we talked about this topic.
Hey, Robin, can we look at the UIP slide again? Because I didn't have it memorized, so it's hard to do that without seeing what there, thank you.
Of course. Right, consistent instruction that can be measured, absolutely. Back to the guaranteed viable instruction or educational experience. You are right about that. Thank you. Yep, that, that's right, Stacy, that at Sanchez, they do review discipline data. Because we know that students' ability to learn i- is all about engagement and access. You're right, scope and sequence, back to the guaranteed and viable curriculum. So these are all what you're referring to, these connections refer back to the systems and structures. These broad systems and structures that if we can put in place, serve as the backbone for schools and teachers in helping to, to differentiate their instruction. Mm-hmm, consistent discipline and social emotional support. That's absolutely right. In terms of deliver of content and not being disproportionate. And you're, you are right, teachers did not complain because it was valuable to them. They understood the why and therefore they were very, um, very open to the how and to the what. Absolutely. So thank you very much for, for, for your engagement with that. And, um, so now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nativity Miller, who is going to talk about the next slide. Good evening.
And actually, we are.
Do you want me to just, sorry, go ahead? No, we're just going to transition to the, um, the second half of our presentation where we're going to continue to guide new learning and really get into some of the topics that you guys have asked about. So just want a reminder of what our targets are. We, um, board members will be able to explain the purpose of the systems and structures that we will be implementing this fall. And then we will actually describe how conditions for our teachers will improve and how the experience of students and families will improve. And I'm going to turn it over, um, to Dr. Messier as she, um, discusses more of the content of our strategic, strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. So, um, you know, I think it's really important to reiterate that, um, our teachers are not at fault. This has been a core part of our beliefs as we have been developing the systems and structures for the strap plan. It's, it's not that we have bad teachers, we have great teachers. It, it's our system that has been the problem. We've really failed to have the systems and structures there to support our teachers in, um, the way that I think that, that they've needed to be supported in order to close achievement gaps. So what are some of those systems and structures? We know from the research that, um, some of the things that successful districts do to close achievement gaps is to focus on the most important standards and to make those decisions about what standards are most important at the central office level. We know that districts that are successful in closing gaps have assessment systems that inform instruction. We know that they have consistent instructional models. And we know that they have really strong tiered systems of support. So what does that look like in our system? Those most important standards are going to live within our common scope and sequence. So, so that's the, the tangible product that we're creating to ensure that we're communicating what those most important standards are for every grade level, every content, every course. For our assessment system, we're really working on developing, um, what we, what we've been calling a balanced assessment system. So a, an assessment system that informs instruction by having better formative tools in place for teachers to use that are actually closer to the instructional process. We've been working on a common instructional model, the same one that we've been using as the framework to guide and structure this presentation. The team's also working on foundational five instructional practices. That'll be common instructional practices for our district, um, and of course, our MTSS system. So I think it's really important to call out that a very important value for us in this district is ensuring that we're being responsive to the needs of our students. And so we are very intentionally developing all of these systems through the lens of culturally and linguistically responsive pedagogy. We have to build our systems with culturally and linguistically diverse students in mind as well as students with disabilities. If we build the systems with those students in mind, then we don't have to design those on the backend to try to fit them. We've got to do that universal design upfront and do it in a way, um, that ensures that our systems are going to be supporting all of our kids. We, uh, where all of this starts to come together and become meaningful is in our common instructional units. So that is something that the teams have just begun building right now, are some common instructional units that will support our teachers with, um, not just what the standards are and how we're going to assess them, but some, um, guidelines and resources and support around the how. And then it all comes together really powerfully in the collaborative structures for using data. You can't do, um, data-driven instruction and make strong data-informed decisions on a system level without having all of these pieces in place. So, um, in order to talk more about that, I'm going to use a metaphor. The metaphor of building a house. So let's say that the house we're building is BVSD's instructional systems. To me, that culturally and linguistically responsive pedagogy is like the design philosophy for your house. It guides everything you do. It helps ground every decision you make about what your house is going to look like and how you're going to build it. You know, when I, I was fortunate enough to be able to build, um, my house, uh, from the ground up. And one of our design principles was we really wanted quality versus quantity. We didn't want a big house so much as we wanted a nice house that suited our functions. When we think about the common scope and sequence, the balanced assessment system, MTSS, and the common instructional model, those things are so core to the house being able to stand up that those are really like the foundation. Those four things really, um, anchor the foundation and, um, set some rough boundaries for the rest of the construction, right? The foundation in a way determines what the, the footprint of your building is going to be overall. Even though it doesn't say a lot about what the building's going to look like above ground, it leaves a lot of space for that. Our common instructional units are where we start to frame the house in. So we're putting in the studs, we're starting to define where the rooms are, where the stairs are, where the hallways are. But it's, it's not a livable house at that point. It's just a frame. In order to really make it all come together, we have to have the finishing touches, right? We have to have the bathroom fixtures and the kitchen fixtures and the paint and the flooring and um, all of those things that actually customize the house for the people that are going to live in it. And that's the magic that happens when teachers come together to collaboratively use structures, to collab, to use these collaborative structures, to use data to make decisions about what their next very fine-grained instructional moves are going to be. Another way of talking about this is, uh, to phrase, frame it in the, the who, what, and how, right? So the who, all of our BVSD students, um, deserving consistently high-quality academic and social emotional learning experiences, all of our teachers deserving robust systems that support their professional practice. The what really being defined first by that scope and sequence and then further defined and clarified by our balanced assessment system. Good assessments actually help to clarify what we mean by the standards. And then the how being in the instructional model and practices. So, um, quick, quick quiz. Board members, who wants to throw out there in the chat? Well, I'll use Robin's method of putting this in the chat. If you could type in the chat, what is one system or structure that is critical to our success?
Well, Sam, can I just say, instead of typing it, because it's a little too long for me to, uh, put in the chat as I did last time. It's not a one-sentence thing, but I do like the idea of the foundation. It, it made me think of, um, we've had the, uh, been fortunate enough to build several different houses. And, and one thing we learned along the way, and you learn from the other districts as well, is, um, you know, checking for the bit night in the soil. And it made me think of, um, school districts themselves checking at that, you know, before that foundation is established, look at what you're working with. And I, so I think that that was an important, it was nice to hear that analogy and to think of, um, all of the pieces that go into that foundational work.
I love that connection, Donna. So I love that connection about having to, um, really study the site to know like what you're going to have to do with your foundation. We have a lot of bent and rocky, expensive soil under, under our house as well. And that leads to a really complicated foundation. A comp, a, a good foundation isn't just a slab of concrete. It can be pretty extensive. The one under my house has 18 caissons and a French drain and like all kinds of stuff going on there. Um, great. And some good things in the chat, culturally relevant pedagogy, common scope and sequence, balanced assessment system, community engagement, more teachers of color and teachers who are bilingual, relevant curriculum, family engagement, absolutely. So, um, at this point, I am going to pass it along to Ginny Vigilik, our executive director in the Northwest Network, to talk a little bit more about scope and sequence and about why that is so important.
Poo, I made it all the way through the day, right until now, stopping to talk without unmuting, so. Adherence to the common scope and sequence is really closer to, I speak in metaphors, so imagine if you're attempting to, you're attempting to film The Wizard of Oz, for example. And everyone has a different script and pages are missing. And you get to the point where you're trying to develop the film, tell a story, create a storyboard, and there are entire chunks that are missing, the film won't make any sense. And without a common scope and sequence. And without a common scope and sequence, we do that to our kids on a regular basis, not out of malice, not out of any, not out of any incorrect moves by our teachers because we don't have a common scope and sequence in order to be able to collaborate with each other and to be able to be on the same page on what are the prioritized standards and what are those very things that make for a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So we can switch the slide, Sam, and just glance at The Wizard of Oz. If, for those of you who remember that in 1939 classic, we have Judy Garland singing away. The house leaves Kansas, lands on the witch, everything happens, she melts. And then Dorothy returns home and all is blissful and we get the lesson of there's no place like home. But without that scope and sequence, next slide, please, Sam. Without that scope and sequence, Dorothy's singing about a rainbow and ends up on a yellow brick road. We don't know how she got there. There's no building of the tension because we have no idea what the initial conflict is. And so that is a brief metaphor of what happens when our teachers are confronted with trying to create their own scope and sequence without a measure of where everybody else is at the same point in time. And our kids then don't have that information. Jen Garfield is going to go into a little bit better explanation and show you an actual second grade year at a glance.
Thank you, Ginny. Good evening, board members. So here's an example of a grade two scope and sequence year at a glance. We used a process to develop this. So as a reminder, when we're thinking about scope and sequence, we're thinking about what standards, what prioritize standards and when. So the first thing that we did is we thought about our standards that our elementary educators had prioritized the summer before. And we started to bundle them. We started to group them. And those groups of standards began to form units, and that's what you see here on this grade two year at a glance. And then the second question that we worked with was thinking about these units, what, how might we sequence them? What's the storyline? What what needs to go first? And then students would build their understanding upon that unit to the next unit and so forth. And then the third piece is pacing. How long do these units, these standards, take for students to master? So here you see the different content areas laid out using that process. And as much as possible, we really want to encourage our teachers in in the classrooms to think about the connections between social studies, science, reading, writing, and math, and making those connections with students for for that understanding of the prioritized standards. The next slide, I believe Kyle Addington is going to discuss what this looks like at secondary scope and sequence in year at a glance.
Thanks, Jennifer, and hello, board members. This example, and it's only an example of what the scope and sequence year at a glance document would look like at a secondary level. Obviously, we don't have the complication of elementary and secondary in that we can look at courses in a singular way. And what you'll notice on the left-hand side would be the example of what units exist. Those units and the bars that correspond to the right would represent time. And all of these units are based off the prioritized standards. So the point of the process that we're at with our secondary teachers is we are now gathering information from each building and school to be able to get a sense of what people do on their scope and sequence currently, taking that information back and then constructing the best year at a glance document that we can with our teachers to be able to lay out our year at a glance. This document too is just serving as example and know that we also have spots and places for more information. And we could see things like our prioritize standards and even associated assessment maps being combined with the year at a glance document in future.
Thank you, Kyle. So and I I just want to really give a shout out to the whole curriculum and standards team for the outstanding work they've been doing on the common scope and sequence and and the degree of teacher involvement that they've had in developing it both at the elementary and at the secondary level. So, you know.
Sam, Kathy has a question. I'm sorry. I'm not sure if you can see her hand. Yep.
So can we go back to the last slide, please, Sam? So what I'm wondering is which is coming first? So I know we adopted a new math curriculum and books that went with it. So is that driving the scope and sequence that you show me here or is this driving the choice of the curriculum? It's kind of a cart and horse question, I'm wondering.
Jennifer, do you want to speak to elementary and I can speak to secondary a little bit?
Sure. So the programs that we've adopted at the elementary level, so Funtas and Pennella already, Gen Math Expressions, we use those as resources, but the standards drive the work. So although we have adopted those programs and they were part of the process in thinking about the creation of scope and sequence, this is a standards-based scope and sequence. So we start with standards first and then we layer on the the resources that we've adopted at the district level.
And the process would be true at secondary as well in a very similar nature. And I think this is also something we'll take into consideration as we start to develop units of what makes sense and how. And also when we consider assessment about what resources we currently have to be able to meet the needs of a year at a glance documents and our units that are being developed will be melded in there with that.
So how far off are we from what you guys think is the standards based in what we actually are implementing and what we have? I mean, do we measure that? Because I can't imagine they're perfectly aligned.
It is, it would be difficult to measure currently, right? Our current state is is different than I think our desired state. So when we look at the resources that we do have, we are pleased of what we're seeing of enough alignment to feel like the prioritize standards, the standards that we have prioritized, that the resources we have will serve as a great benefit in both the scope and sequence aspect and the assessment aspect.
Quickly, can I ask one more question, Sam? I'm guessing that this scope and sequence was pre-pandemic. I'm guessing we aren't making all these scope and sequences during the pandemic, or are we? Either our teachers are having to identify what they think are the highest standards and having to just figure out that we'll catch students up later because we can't do it all in a pandemic in a high-flex learning environment.
Yeah, absolutely. So you know, the scope and sequence is really for we're implementation of the scope and sequence and asking people to follow it will start next year when we are very hopefully past pandemic. I think, you know, the materials question is a great question, Kathy, and it's it, there is always a little bit of a chicken and an egg relationship there for sure. I think that we're we're fortunate that the, one of the criteria that we've used when we've ever, when we've been selecting instructional materials is that we've looked for materials that are very well-aligned to the standards. And that that's a lens that we use every time we we select materials. And so the materials we have, I think, put us in a really good position to be able to align them to our scope and sequence.
One last question. So aside from phonics and and literacy, there aren't any other statewide requirements. Is that right? I mean, the only place where the states invading our local control of instruction is around phonics and literacy in the early grades. Is that right?
Um, I I would say that that even with phonics and early literacy, they don't necessarily call out a sequence in which you have to teach that. So the the scope and sequence is really our, our attempt to get everybody doing things in the same order.
They did tell us which systems we need to use, so.
They did. They did. In terms of core instructional materials, yep.
And just in that area, right, Sam? No place else.
That's correct.
But the I, but through the CMAS testing, they certainly dictate what the expectations are for kids to know K through eight.
They do. So the state absolutely sets the state standards. And, you know, as a school district, we're required to meet or exceed those standards. And the way they hold us accountable is through those state-level assessments that are given at the end of the year.
Right, because that's the one way we risk our local control is if we don't meet some of the the basic thresholds.
Absolutely.
Sam, I like that you pointed out the the aspect that that we choose the curriculum and and the curriculum. Where I'm having a hard time, I guess, understanding is we're talking about the scope and sequence as if this is a new idea. But but I always, for the decades I taught, we had a scope and sequence that we followed. So how is this that we're presenting? And I put it in the chat, but but I want, because I wanted you to have the the question right up front. How is this different from what we have done previously?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Well, I think this is different from what we've done previously in that we have not defined as a whole district what the order is that we want to teach our prioritize standards in. So for reading at first grade, we have never said this is the order that you do the standards in. We've said, here are the standards you cover in first grade. But we haven't said, which ones do you do in the first quarter of the year? Which ones do you do in the second quarter of the year? Now, we never want to get to this place where we're telling people what to do on an exact date and remove all the flexibility from our teachers because they need flexibility to be able to reteach, to be able to respond to students' needs to accelerate if they already know material. But if we can at least get things in the same order, then that'll be a step in the right direction.
Okay, thanks.
And then, Richard, I noticed you have your hand up too.
Yeah, and you you answered partially the question that I had in my head was how do you work with the kids that are behind with the, through the scope and sequence? And how does scope and sequence help the kids that are learning English and, you know, those kinds of things?
That's a great question, and I actually think the scope and sequence in many ways is foundational to us having the ability to do that in a systematic way throughout the district. Because the so, the scope and sequence helps define for us, you know, where a student should be relatively at a given point in the year so that we know that by the end of October, they, most of our students should have mastered the following things. And we can design then assessment tools that help us figure out whether students have mastered those things or not. And we can support schools with structures to be able to respond to the various learning needs that students have. If we don't have people doing things in the same order, it's really, really difficult to build and support them with targeted intervention resources that help respond to the different needs of kids in their classroom. And that's one of the things we've heard teachers say that they, that they feel like we have let them down is in the area of having those resources to be able to respond to the targeted needs of kids who may not have reached mastery yet or who may have reached mastery early and need resources for extension.
Yeah, and then when you're talking about the gaps and all of that, usually a number of ways that people define that what the gap is, one is grade levels behind in reading, for example. They're not reading a grade level, they're reading two grade levels behind or whatever. And or they utilize the CMAS scores and they say that the kids are, you know, they're performing at 40 points below their white peers. I guess my curiosity is the standards, I know that we have the state standards and and we have to meet or exceed those standards. And I believe those are already set in stone, pretty much, aren't they?
They are. They are. And I think that one of the the principles of of how of how we see the strategic plan playing out is that we believe every single kid in our system deserves access to the grade level standards. So we want to make sure that we're helping all of our kids get to mastery of the appropriate grade level standards. And unfortunately, sometimes what we see is that we're underselling or we're 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 undershooting the standards for our students. And we're not challenging them at the level that they really deserve to be challenged, of course, with the right level of support. Because ultimately, if we want to get to this end goal of our kids being prepared for postgraduate success, we want to make sure that we're keeping them on a pace to achieve that postgraduate success the whole time that they're with us and ensure that they're mastering the skills at the time that they should be mastering them. So, board members, just Board Member Gebhardt Garcia Myers, do you, do you still have your hands up? Are those new hands or old hands?
Well, I have one quick question, but I'm trying to figure out where it fits in, Sam. And that is how does CTE fit into all the scope and sequence and and students who are going down that path?
Yeah, so we were very intentionally starting with some of our core curriculum areas, particularly in the area of English Language Arts and Mathematics at secondary. We'll begin building out in the other core content areas as we move forward. CTE is a little bit different story because in many ways their curriculum is defined through the state community college system that defines CTE courses and what CTE coursework looks like. So very much in a similar way that our courses that are advanced placement or international baccalaureate are also driven by the outcomes for those national programs. CTE also does have this external entity that we have to be responsive to. Richard, did you have another question?
I think Kitty has a question, Sam.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, Board Member Sergeant.
Yes, I'm wondering if there's a scope and sequence for the specials.
Yeah, so we we will be developing those because we 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 believe that our standards in our areas like art, music, PE are also really important areas that our students deserve access to. And without a scope and sequence, it's hard to guarantee that access to to those content areas for our kids. All right, so I want to just touch on this slide really quickly, I think, you know, because I know that that from a teacher's perspective, scope and sequence can sometimes be interpreted as this is about compliance, that it leads to loss of creativity, that it means we don't trust our teachers. And that couldn't be further from the truth. We actually have tremendous trust in our teachers. I think we have some amazing teachers in our district. I believe that by failing to give them a scope and sequence, we're really living, leaving them a little bit high and dry without the resources that they need. And that from a student's perspective, that scope and sequence creates predictability and familiar structures. It creates transparency of expectation and it creates consistent, high-quality supports when they need it. So we're going to go on and talk about our assessment system really briefly. You know, here you'll see that we have slightly different expectations around assessment, given what category of schools a school falls in, with really the difference being a focus on how often they're engaging in data-driven instruction data cycles. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over again to Kyle Addington and Claire Sims to talk a little bit about the assessment system.
Hi, everyone. I'll jump in on this slide. Really talking about, as we're designing this balanced assessment system, what are the pieces and components of that? So, Sam, I think this one is animated. If you just click through, some labels should come up. Perfect. So what I'm showing here, I know it's very abstract, but think of each of these dots as a type of assessment or really a chance to check in with students about what they're learning. The difference here in how they're set up is really about timing, frequency, and purpose of these assessments. So starting up at the top, one of the tests that we've mentioned already in this meeting, we have some of our state mandated tests like CMAS. This also includes things like PSAT, SAT, the access test for emerging bilinguals. The next level of assessments here that we want to define are the BVSD common assessments. So you can see that these happen a little bit more frequently, a few times through the year, again, to check in on students' learning of those standards. Moving down from that, even more frequently, we have unit assessments. So this happens at the end of a unit. And then the most frequent level at the bottom are formative assessments. We also talk about these on a mini cycle because they happen very frequently in the classroom to inform instruction on a pretty quick time scale. All right, and Sam, if you click through, got some boxes, but I'm actually, if we go to the next slide. got some boxes, but I'm actually, if we go to the next slide, what I want to really highlight here is balance. So really talking about these as a balanced system of assessments. So if we think of those again in kind of that vertical scale of going from those state mandated mandated assessments down to the more frequent formative assessments, we're thinking about a few main ways that these really make up a balanced system. So one of those is how that data from those assessments informs instruction. So at the level of something more like a CMAAS, that's a more summative use of data. So it summarizes student learning at the end of the year. When we go to the other end of the scale, those frequent formative assessments, that really informs learning on a much more frequent, you know, it could be day-to-day or weekly kind of level. Another kind of way that these are balanced is looking at flexibility and expectations. So again, we know things like CMAAS, access, SAT, those are mandated. Those are a common expectation for everybody. A big benefit of those is that we can have those system-wide conversations. We can talk within schools and between schools about looking at the same kind of benchmark of data for students. Again, at the other end of that scale, the more formative kinds of assessments have a lot more flexibility and teacher discretion. And that gives teachers a lot of ability to differentiate as needed. And then proximity to classroom is another way that these assessments are balanced. So again, at the higher level, that's going to inform more of the big picture planning. And as we move down to other assessments, those are really close to day-to-day instruction.
Thanks a lot, Claire. And we brought back this image with a few additional lines on it. We want to be able to highlight and show, number one, that this is all built and constructed off the scope and sequence and our prioritized standards. And we think of those year-at-a-glance documents about when and what type of assessments take place. We want this system to be able to support itself all the way through, meaning that we want our formatives to be able to add up and be able to support what students should know on the unit assessments up to our common assessments and then ensuring that students are able to meet the long-term outcomes for that course or grade. And that is an important piece of what we want our balanced assessment system to be able to do and something that we're thinking really intentionally about how to construct. And as we begin to build units and figure out the assessments to go with it, that's the foundation for assessment in our balanced assessment system. This would be the example of a year-at-a-glance document and what an assessment system might begin to look like. We are in development of units and unit and the units themselves, the assessments go along with it. And so we are making those decisions that we can for what would be the best unit assessment at the end of each of these. The purple dots represent formative and those would happen most often. The yellow dot is still representing a long-term assessment that would take place. This one happens as an example of a PSAT or SAT type example. And the greener, larger, greener dots represent would be more of our common assessment done three to four times throughout the year. As we get into development, we may have to make decisions around what assessments take place and when. So this example, as we begin to develop, could change. We could see the example of the common assessment where we have three at the bottom. We'll want to be intentional about when these assessments take place to make sure that we ensure balance throughout our system. And those larger common dots that move from the bottom of this picture to the units over the units, we call it the olive slide, might make more sense to have that incorporated with a unit assessment that has some key questions or key items associated with that unit assessment that are carrying on from the previous unit assessments. And then one more quick example from what it might look like for an assessment map at the elementary level. Again, we have this olive concept, the star in this case represents the CMAAS that would take place at that time of year and the smaller green dots and the purple dots are representing where formative could take place. And the text below is exactly that. It's just text that could help inform teachers about what the focus is for fifth grade for that particular year.
Thanks, Kyle. Richard, I believe you had your hand up and then Kitty had her hand up as well.
Thank you. Can you give me an example of what a formative assessment would look like at the elementary level?
Sure, affirmative assessment can range a lot of different ways. It could be as simple as a teacher sitting down with a student after seeing a piece of their working, asking them, do they understand it? It could also be more complex and even our examples at UVA of using more formative assessments with tools like Illumine to be able to gather more specific data about really concrete topics and ideas. So there's a wide variety and it's kind of meant to encompass any of those types of actions that happen within a classroom.
And those formative assessments are going to be different from school to school?
Most likely, and this is also an opportunity for teachers to understand their students and be able to make judgment on what type of formative assessment would make sense to be able to figure out what they know on a particular day.
And I know that we've been working on the common assessments. How close are we or?
We do have aspects of common assessments that exist already and we will start with those in mind. Meaning that some of the green dots are these areas that we're thinking about. We want to be able to make sure that our common assessments fit our new scope and sequence. So we do have common assessments in different grade levels and we want to start there with that concept that evaluating those about how they fit into this new scope and sequence.
So the units that that will be developed or are developed already, they will be looking at or using the standards to be able to develop the units, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yep, and I think that'll be an important part of the process as we start to look at what these scope and sequences begin to look like and making sure that they're leading up to our longer-term outcomes just beyond the common aspect. So I think one important, I'll stop there.
So formative and common assessments doesn't necessarily mean that kids are being tested all the time?
Correct. That's one of our big focuses is that concept of balance. When we're thinking about just the instructional infrastructure, we're really speaking to what are the units and what's happening with our standards and prioritize standards, how students are doing. We also recognize that there's many other aspects of assessment that that take place in a school and in a classroom. And in order to have a balanced assessment system, we need to be really cognizant of not just testing all the time.
And I think it'd be very, very helpful because you have parent-teacher conferences along that that line, I guess if you will, in terms of when you meet with parents and you tell them how their kids are doing, blah, 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 blah. I think those parameters were probably really good to have at that time, right?
Absolutely, yeah, for sure. And great questions, Richard, about, you know, I think that that all of these components of the assessment system have to work together to to make it, to make it really effective. I noticed that Kitty and Donna also had some questions. Maybe we could go to those and then loop back to you, Richard, if you still have some more?
I'm okay. Go ahead.
Okay, Kitty?
So I think Richard asked my question, which is how much of these assessments are created by the teachers and which ones are standardized? But I think it's just the state testing and the common assessment that's standardized and the rest of them are the teachers are creating. Is that right?
For some of our schools, we will also have these end-of-unit assessments. So for our highest support schools who do really frequent data cycles, the end-of-unit assessments are also a critical component for them.
And that would be created at the district level?
Yes, it would, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Donna?
And I won't keep you long. I just keep, I can't help but go back to, and I'm sure you'll get to this, in my reading, it also pointed out that you know, the aspect of good, good teaching is having the good leadership, the foundations, the good teachers and the ability of principals to move teachers on if they're not having that impact. But I just want to point it out that I think any good teacher, and we've had it for years in the district, has done those formative assessments. I know as a reading specialist myself, I used to constantly give kiddos hundred-word passages and find out how many mistakes they made in those hundred-word passages to see if they were on the track that they should be for reading, as well as asking them questions about, did they understand the sequential questions, the factual questions, the questions that implied things? So I just want to point it out that all is not totally new under the sun, but I'm glad that to see that we're moving in the direction of of making sure that the instructors that we have are doing the things that we're asking them to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that, you know, one of the things we don't want to imply is that our teachers don't know how to do these assessments, right? Teachers know how to do formative assessment. You know, they know how to use these various types of assessments. What we just haven't done a good job of is making sure that all of our teachers have those tools in their toolkit so they can do it without having to recreate the wheel every time on their own independently in every class.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure that it's not like this is something totally new under the sun that teachers don't know about because we all know and should be doing those formative assessments.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. One of the things we learned from a curriculum review that we did is that a lot of our teachers are spending huge amounts of time creating lessons, creating content, creating assessments, gathering materials on their own. And we feel like that is doing them a huge disservice to ask them to spend hours and hours and hours a week trying to pull all these things together, going onto the Teachers Pay Teachers site and downloading those things. These are things we should be providing for them.
Thanks.
You bet. So I do, oh, sorry. Did someone else have another question? Okay, I do want to speak to the fact that, you know, there's definitely, we want to be really cautious about the use of assessment and the use of data in our system. You know, I think that a lot of times when we talk about assessment, what we hear from our community is that, you know, well, but, you know, the last thing we need is more assessment, especially if it's standardized assessment because those tests are flawed. We know how our kids are doing. We don't need to assess them to find that out. And, you know, that is, that is partially true. It is absolutely true that lots of standardized tests actually have bias built into them. And that's something that we have to be aware of. I think that we have to be really conscious of the fact that we need to build our systems in a culturally responsive way and we need to use our assessment data in a culturally responsive way so that we can avoid the assessments becoming another tool that perpetuates inequity. So this is something we're really taking to heart. We're going to make sure that we're reviewing items for accessibility to culturally and linguistically diverse learners and students with disabilities and doing ongoing review to ensure that items, to identify any items that appear to give biased results so that we can remove those from our system. We want to make sure that those assessments are aligned to the true depth of the standard. It's, it can be, it can be easy to fall into the trap of focusing on just low-level skills with assessments in a system. That's not what we want to do. We want to make sure that we're really aligning our assessments to the standards across a range of depth of knowledge and making sure that we're looking at more authentic performance. We definitely want to avoid ever using a single data point in a way that has high-stakes consequences for a kid. No student should be denied access to an advanced learning opportunity because they didn't do well on one specific test. So we always want to be using multiple measures as we evaluate individual kids and viewing them through the lens of a growth mindset, right? We also want to make sure that we're using assessment results appropriately at the school and system level. So we would never want to penalize a school for low performance on standardized tests. Instead, we want to use these measures, especially growth measures and especially comparative gaps among subgroups to set targets for our schools, to help to serve as optional individual measures of student learning for evaluation purposes, to monitor progress towards equitable access and to identify those schools that maybe need a little bit more support from us. So I am going to go ahead and skip through to instructional practices, board members, because I know that we are running a little short on time, but I also see we've got a couple of questions on the assessment system. And I will start with, Richard, did you have another question?
No, but I do have, not regarding the, well, maybe it does relate to the assessment system. I'm looking at, when you're looking at culturally relevant pedagogy, you look at the standards and you look at what we have now in terms of our readings in, say, literature classes or in that line. And most of your books are Eurocentric and there's no reading material that relates to the contributions of ethnic minorities in the United States or those kinds of things. How do you, how do you, how do you get all of that to relate to the standards that you're talking about? Because the standards were were written way before and now we're
Such a great question, and I would be really excited to bring back another learning session for you at some point to tell you about our unit development process. Our team has been incredibly intentional about in the unit design, at every stage of the unit design, viewing that through a culturally responsive lens. So even when we're interpreting the standards, we want to make sure that we're doing that in a culturally responsive way so that we're thinking about various perspectives that we're ensuring that our students see themselves in the curriculum, that we're ensuring that we're thinking about the way that different groups are represented and ensuring that we're not doing that through a single lens or through a deficit lens. So there are design principles built into those units that we're building and I would love to share more with you about that. We're just getting started in that work, so I think that might be a whole nother work session.
And do you, do you, we have like a timeline when we would be able to do something like that?
Well, we actually, we're going to be wrapping up work on our first two units that are both third-grade units, one in Language Arts and one in Mathematics, probably by the end of this week.
And would that have to go through agenda setting, Tina?
Richard, I don't think so if it's a work session.
So how can we get?
I'm also happy to just sit down with you, Richard, if you want to like go through the units together and highlight some things, so.
Well, I'd like to see the whole board, but I would love to see it and I'm hoping the board, either board members would like to join in on that too.
Let's just mark it down as a follow-up because the board has shown interest in this for a while and talked about, and also we had the legislation that mandates it as well. So maybe it's a good idea to, you know, an exercise with the third grade to show how, what it looks like when it actually happens because we've talked about it quite a bit.
Yeah, yep, we would be happy to do that.
Excellent, right on.
Donna, I believe you were next, and then Lisa.
Yeah, I won't keep, I'll make this really short and to the point. But I was glad to hear you say that, you know, that we don't, we don't want to wait until the standardized test to find out a student is all on below. But what concerned me in all of my years of not only in BVSD but several other districts, and I forgot to mention earlier that I was an intern at one time in Gallup, New Mexico. So I know some of the issues that are prevalent there. But what bothered me and what bothers me is that students have to fall into the below the 12th percentile in order to get those special ed services. And I'm hoping, my hope would be that kids could get them a lot earlier before you know, that service that they need before having to wait to fall in the, below the 12th percentile. Just a statement to, I would have felt remiss if I didn't point that out. Thanks.
Absolutely. And the MTSS component, that's part of the foundation, right? It's one of those critical core four big systems that you have to have as the foundation to be able to support kids when you have a really high-functioning MTSS system. And you don't have to like rely on kids being referred to special ed to get the services and supports they need.
Yep.
The supports they need, yeah. Lisa?
Thanks. I appreciate all this, this list of how to assess appropriately. What I'm wondering is it seems clear how one would do that with those less frequent large tests. But when we're looking at the, I'm trying to remember what we called them. But when we're looking at the, I'm trying to remember what we called them, mini cycle tests or talking about that nine week UVA cycle. How can we have tests that are that frequent and that quick that are also doing all the things we're talking about here? Not teaching to the test, being in depth, etc.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly becomes the more challenging. Especially when if their teacher created assessments because many of those formative checks will be teacher created assessments. Our team is working on helping to support those mini cycle assessments with some tools. I think that our, what we want to make sure we really get right are those things that we're asking everybody to do. So when we're asking folks to do a common assessment, we want to make sure we get that right. And that we do that in a culturally responsive way, that we really align it to the standards. And then as, once we get those pieces built, I think then we'll have the space to be able to support. Teachers in our system around those those mini cycle assessments that are closer to the classroom instruction. We're certainly going to provide some examples of those. The hard part with the with the mini cycles is because they are so close to the instructional experience. Teachers do need some discretion and flexibility to be able to adjust them to to match what's happening in the classroom.
In the UVA model, are those teacher developed as well? Or do we have some sort of top down model there for doing those nine week assessments?
Yeah, great question. We have both. So, you know, some of them are. The the interim assessments that they're giving on more of a nine week cycle. Are ones that we've been helping them to create and populating and eliminate. But the ones that they're doing on more of a one week cycle or an every other week cycle. Our teacher created like exit tickets that they're doing in mathematics, just to do a quick check to see how students are doing. On some of the skills that are going to be coming up.
Would it be possible at some point to see some of those district created nine week cycle tests in comparison with maybe bullet point standards that we're looking for?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are with those third grade units that I mentioned. We actually will have those assess, those those assessment tools as well. So as we're building these units, we're also building the assessments that go with them.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. All right, board members, you have been so patient and attentive this evening, and I want to thank you for that attention. I want to give some time to Tiffany Lychok to talk just a little bit about our common BVSD instructional model. Because it's so foundational to what we're doing. So Tiffany, would you mind coming on and just spending a little bit of time on this?
Absolutely. I'm excited to share with you all. Hello, Dr. Anderson and Board of Education members. Lovely, lovely to see you all this evening. So our instructional model is a key component that we have been working on and spent quite a bit of time last year. Can co constructing with a task force of about 90 plus educators throughout the system. That included teachers from almost every single one of our school buildings, building leaders and district network support staff. The goal of an instructional model, as you can see here on the screen, is to create a teaching and learning cycle. And to establish common language around expectations for what happens within each of those phases of a teaching and learning cycle. We used the research that has been established by McCrell International in order to follow a process to figure out what the BVSD instructional model would look like. Part of that process included a data dive into our schools to see what current state was. So are we using models right now? We had about 15 different models we looked at. Those ranged from everything to Madeline Hunter, to the five Es, to design thinking, to project based learning pathways. Just to see what we had happening in the system and also to look for any sort of consistency across our schools and also within our schools. And the data that we found pretty, it was a pretty telling story of use of models, but not a lot of consistency. Across our schools or sometimes even within schools. So the need to kind of establish this common model came from that data and from that research task force. So the big phases that you see here are aligned with the ones that McCrell recommends as sort of the biggest phases of learning. That many of those other models also align to as well. So you can see the engage part of our cycle is really how we get our kids' brains on fire and start to help them see themselves in the learning they're about to engage in. The set goals part of the model helps us to be very clear about what kids are learning in student friendly language. Provide them with tools to help them get there and really be clear with them about what success will look like when they've learned it. That guide new learning process has research based practices as well as a lot of collaborative. Thinking built into it and different kinds of grouping. So facilitation of whole group, small group and individual context within it. With high levels of student interaction and collaboration. That reinforce and reflect really ties back a lot to our assessment, our balanced assessment system. And we've been talking a lot about formative assessment and what does that look like? And that's where our students are receiving wise, timely instructive feedback in a really supportive environment. The key thing here is that our teachers will be looping back through the learning that students just experienced. Checking for understanding and either engaging in reteaching or extension as students need as part of that cycle there. So a lot of alignment to those formative assessment discussions we were just having. That part of the instructional model can be a loop that happens on a weekly or even a daily basis. And it also works at sort of the bigger level or the macro level for our units. Where those chunks of the unit that Kyle and Claire were speaking about those mini cycles within a unit. Lead up to that demonstration of unit learning, which is more of our unit assessment, end of unit assessment. So our our goal again with this was to have that consistency of language. And the instruction in our unit plans will align to these phases of the model as well.
Thanks so much, Tiffany, and thank you for for whipping through that really fast. Perhaps doesn't do it justice because I know so much deep work has gone into that. Tina, you you had a hand up?
Yeah, I did. Just kind of following up with Lisa, Lisa's comment and Richard's comments about examples. I think one natural progression from this presentation would be really showing explicitly and concretely. Sort of what we're doing today and what we're moving toward in terms of the assessment, what does it look like? I also think it would be helpful for the community to have an example of what a, of what would make a standardized test. Not culturally responsive. Like, what does that really mean? What, you know, what does a paragraph look like that isn't inclusive to our community so that we understand and come together on that issue? Because I don't think it's clear to everyone how that works. So I I think it would be great to get really, you know, to even see pieces of paper and things like that at the actual test.
For sure, we can absolutely, we definitely have those examples. Unfortunately, many of those examples exist. Kathy?
So I'm just going back to what Robin said about different kinds of data because this, most of this presentation has been all about tests. So if we come back, I would love to know what other kinds of data we're using to inform our instruction and how our students are doing. Because I haven't heard much of that tonight.
That, that actually, that's a great question. And when we talk about assessments, they don't all necessarily have to be tests. So in a balanced assessment system, what we, what we're really trying to do is balance those standardized multiple choice tests. That can be built in an online system that are that are easy to display as data with more authentic tools. And that's actually playing itself out in the math unit that we've been creating. We've been trying to include some math problems where we actually give students the opportunity to record their. Their oral reflection about their thinking about how they would solve that problem. Which is a very different way of assessing math and in many ways more authentic and in many ways picks up student mathematical understanding. Instead of really testing their reading level and whether they can understand the question.
Well, and as we've heard a lot of.
So great observation.
And and just something else we can think about later is, you know, how does all this fit in with all of the things teachers are supposed to balance? Including addressing students' social emotional needs during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So board members, thank you so much for being patient. You might actually be happy that we didn't get to the the last part of this, which was we were, we were going to do some role plays. But if you wanted to see what we might have had you do. We were going to have you role play responding to different teachers, community members, students. Who might have concerns about the strategic plan. So if any of you ever want to get together and role play one of these one on one, we'd be happy to support you in that. And sorry that we ran out of time for that this evening. We are so grateful to have had this time to talk with you this evening.
Yeah, we are so appreciative of your time and commitment. I I really wish this meeting could have been in person. I'm going to, you know, and so I hope. That when we come back together to learn more about this, that we are in person and able to connect with each other at that level. So thank you.
And Sam, you all did a great job. I didn't, I didn't, I'm I'm kind of glad we skipped the role play. Because I actually role played with the teacher today as I took a long walk with her. And of, you know, things that that she sees and and we we talked a lot about some of the aspects of the strategic plan. So it wasn't, it was real play, not role play. So thanks.
Richard, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to ask, do you, are we all going to be fully vaccinated by then? I mean, I'm I'm fully vaccinated. I got about two shots already. I don't know about the rest of you.
I'm okay with social distancing and masking. I can do it.
Well, you know, but if we're all fully vaccinated, we don't have to mask if we're socially distant.
Oh, we need a whole committee on that one. All right.
Anyway, so thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And hey, listen, I role play and real play almost every day with parents.
Absolutely.
All right, Rob, do you want to close this out?
I do. First of all, I want to thank our team who spent a great deal of time really trying to not just cover the material. But then 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 try to actually feed this through the instructional model. This is the first time we've tried this and I really felt like that 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 once we got going, that that was, that was really effective. And and I really just appreciate the conversation and the the development of just understanding. That I watched happen amongst our governance team around some of these aspects. And, you know, I think that as as educators, you know, we we we, we have a tendency sometimes to get more. Into the educationese versus at staying at the high level. I think that this kind of gave us an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper, take, take some time to do that. And then also for the board to raise some some questions, I think that. So hopefully today you felt like we were able to build some understanding. We also heard some questions that we can respond to. And I'm with Tina, being in person to be able to put your hands on examples and being able to read, read the room, everybody's cameras on, understanding. Having more people there to support. But but as long as the board was okay with this, these, you know, maybe we refer to these as kind of deep dive work sessions. Where we really get our kind of hands into some of the of the of the things that are going on. So we have a full understanding of what it is that we're moving forward, we're doing. So just thanks to the team and thanks to the board for sticking in there with us for for a couple of hours. Hopefully you felt, felt engaged throughout the process.
Yeah, um, thank you so much. And I I think another work session on a topic as an extension of this before the end of this year would be a good idea.
We totally do that.
Awesome. All right, Kitty?
Just one quick thing I wanted to share. When I was in college and we were learning about culturally biased tests. They gave us IQ tests that were targeted towards cultures different from our own. And I came up needing special ed services. So, you know, it's a great example of how bad they could be.
And, okay, does anyone else have any other comments or are these stray hands that are up? Okay, stray hands. Perfect. All right. Have a great evening and I don't think we'll be seeing you until after spring break. I hope all of the staff here have a restful spring break. We know how much work you're doing and appreciate that you're doing this work in particular. While we're also negotiating a pandemic and all of the work that that entails. So please, really deep appreciation from all of us.